Very good stuff.
I'm opening now. I'm trying to pretend I'm down for the day.
Hi Kobe.
Hello.
Good times.
Can you work that off?
I don't know if it's work. Oh, whoa, 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 yeah. Not a game.
Oh, she really does help me out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm very much grateful.
Yeah, they're giving the herd. So.
They're all not the best of the competition.
That's on the other end.
So, the PEP, oh, like, the past came with those kind of the new pieces of things.
Yeah, that was all I got on the years. Very profitable. Yeah, but it's like, it's going out to California like a big beast. It doesn't do any good to show them.
Hey, you're sending me up.
I bet they were.
No, I'm just asking.
So.
Yeah, I want to say something else.
I started the career with the.
I mean, almost like.
Yeah, they did, uh.
Let's stop selling here.
Yeah.
All this probably worked. It's not a general love. The point is, it's getting. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I mean, it's. Not only in that, it's the protection of education as well.
Oh, yeah. Well, back again tonight, don't go.
You don't.
Well, you don't know.
I mean, most schools listen to you.
Yeah, you're ready. I'm.
But. That's not honest. Well, we never did the question.
Nobody did that though.
I didn't see what it called.
We don't know.
I don't know.
And then I need us to take one of the games at home school. And kids all get it right now.
Okay, we're meeting tomorrow. But we need to survive the United States of America. And we're going to have a lot of good things saying for our nation under God and goodness all, with honesty and justice.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Do we have any trouble of participation this evening?
Um, so yes, I'm not sure of this where I'm supposed to be. I wanted to petition the board. I had, um, I was required to petition to get the, um, bulbs typed in, changed over so that we can pay the P V couch that money.
We have you on the agenda.
Okay.
I'll have to change it. Right down there. Awesome.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Barbara.
Do you have an agenda? Cause I haven't seen one. I don't even know what's on your agenda. We have an extra right here. I'm sorry, I've been here all day.
Yes.
Thank you, Jenny. You're welcome. Um, may I say something that might help anything? I know we're coming up to the budget process for the town because I have the city on that committee. And I just wanted to know when will the school board be working with the principal to create the budget that will go to the superintendent and the rest of the board? Because I guess eventually my thought, the process would be that they bring it to the town so that the town, the town official and the three people from the community can see it. So when will you guys be getting together to do that?
Uh, right now, I believe you're working on that with the, on the school personnel side of it.
Correct.
Um, putting together things at the A O S office. And then it will actually come into, um, the school board itself. Actually, we're going to be discussing a little bit this evening. And then, um, we'll probably have, um, a couple of meetings with the budget committee. Okay, or as far as a workshop meeting or something like that, before they discuss things that are going on here.
So. I, I, I think I understood you, Mike, but I don't think I got your answer of what I'm looking for.
As far as the meetings with the budget committee and the school committee, we usually do that around May. Uh, towards the middle of May, we usually invite you to a meeting or two.
Well, I know you guys usually come up here because I've sat up here when they, at the budget meetings with the select people and whoever else. That's not my question, Jenny. My question is, the school board has collectively, previously used to have two members of the school board work with the principal to review that budget. And I want to know who on the school board has been assigned to review the budget and work on it to come up with a budget to present. Whether it's to the superintendent or whomever, because Jim, uh, Jim Underwood used to get that from members of the school, the school board after they worked with the principal, reviewed it, and then it was presented to the rest of the board. So they got a chance to see it. So my question is, who on this school board is going to be looking at that budget and working with you?
Can I just ask, say one thing? I asked Mr. Johnson this month to put the budget on so we can review with Barbara. And what I'd like to see happen is for the members, all of us, take a portion of this budget and, you know, review it. Uh, there's a lot to going over a budget. And I feel if we each take sections of it and then, you know, come together collectively and, uh, but right now Tina, I think she does, you know, the department, Mr. Johnson. And then I feel that the board has to be more actively involved in this.
I, I, I can't attest to what you want.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, past practice has been two school board members were always involved. And the reason I'm asking that is because when the board, I've been at every school board budget meeting. And when I get there and Mr. Johnson has seven or eight or 10 pages worth of stuff for us to review, you can't digest that at one time. It's just too much to look at. Even if you got there an hour before or a half an hour before, you're waiting to look at that information to ask questions. And you know, last year, Mr. Johnson was there an hour before the meeting started. But like I said, you're going through seven, eight, 10 pages of an Excel spreadsheet trying to decipher, well, does this seem right? Is this what we're doing? And I think it just makes better transparency if everybody on that school board had a hand in it somewhere. But I don't think, and it's no reflection on this forum, it's no reflection on Mr. Johnson. But I don't think you should delegate your responsibility to say you understand what they're asking for without you having input to it. So whether they take your advice, Wanda, or they turn around and look back at past years, there was always two members of the school board that worked with the principal and the superintendent on our budgets. And I'm going back to Jim Underwood's days.
Well, I hope that we start a lot earlier today. Because you're right, it is, it is too much to digest. And we've looked at this, we all have many times, and there's so many things I still don't understand about it. So I'm hoping we can, you know, start earlier and be more active with it.
The other thing Mr. Johnson has always been, uh, able to share with us, but up until that point, uh, are usually, I think the meetings are in May or June, uh, what percentage is left in each budget? And I remember asking him clearly at the last budget meeting, well, how much is left? And they're telling me, well, they can't tell us because you have to go to August to see what's spent. Well, what happens if there's a hundred percent of a budget left? Where does that money go? Especially when I can't tell on this budget that you're giving me, telling me that you want $50,000 for something and you've only spent $10,000, but you're going to get 40 of that to go into the general fund and you're still asking for 50 this year. You have to look at the comparisons of what are left. Mike, you have, you're, you're making a conversation and would you share with me what's being said? So maybe I just don't get it. Or Mr. Johnson?
Mike asked me to provide clarification on how the carryover works.
Thank you.
And the carryover specifically is money that you don't spend from your budget.
I understand that.
And money that you don't spend within a budget, uh, basically is your carryover for the next year. And that's, that's challenged automatically by the software. And I gave Wanda, uh, a copy of the year-to-date expenditure run as of the end of December this evening. And my office can crank those out, uh, at the request of any of the board members pretty much at any time and email it to you. But just to back up a little bit, Barbara, to answer your question, how do you know during the course of the year, how much money you have left on a given line or a given cost center? And the answer is to just simply run that report. And we can, we can provide that at any time.
Oh, I understand that, Mr. Johnson, and I thank you for clarifying that. But I'm well aware, because previously that was given every month to the school board members. I only said I'll have work for three years. But we got that report every month so we could tell. But I think, and I'm not saying that you're missing what I'm asking. You guys are going to prepare a budget for the community and you have asked for $50,000 in X, Y, Z account. This year that we're coming out of, you asked for $50,000. But you actually only spent $10,000 of that 50. So you have $40,000 left over. But when I come to vote on this, you're still asking for 50, but you didn't use it. So you put $40,000 into a, a general fund. And if you didn't spend that, why are you asking for 50 now?
And, and what you're, and I hear, I hear similar questions from other towns during the course of budget season. How tight you run a budget is ultimately a board decision. I've been in meetings in other towns where the board has directed me to cut X from the fuel line and cut X from electricity and so on, and that tightens your budget. The tighter your budget gets, the less carryover you have from one year to the next, that's true. But to answer your question specifically, why would you budget for something that you're not going to spend? Many times you don't know exactly what you're going to spend. So you have to make kind of an educated prediction. And the best, the best example is heating fuel. Uh, heating fuel for your school was a big ticket item in your budget. And during the course of the previous two years, you've had a relatively mild winter. So we brought through money on the heating oil line. This winter has been much colder and chances are pretty good that we will not be bringing through as much money, for example, on the heating line. That's just one example. But if this board through the course of the budget workshops and we're required to have three, if they direct me to tighten the budget and cut more from a given line, that's, that's a board level decision. And that's entirely up to this board.
In fact, Michael, if I could just ask you to bear with me one a little bit more for answering the question, please. Um, I thank you both for responding. I think you've got it clear now what I'm saying. It doesn't make sense that we keep over budgeting but not spending what we have. I understand that we have to, we can't run it to the bare bones that we have $0. But I also know that if something happened and we needed to get money, you can come to the town and say, we need an emergency meeting because we need this and we don't have the money. Okay?
Right.
Whether we like to do that or not, it's, it's possible to do that. The other, the other thing is, um, I'm asking the school board collectively, take into consideration that this community is being budgeted $2.1 million. And I don't, I can't tell you how many kids are in the school. Can you tell me some, how many kids are in the elementary?
Approximately 70.
I didn't hear any of those people.
Approximately 70.
Okay. And how many do we have in our high school roughly?
39.
39. Okay, so basically for 109, I'm going to take out, and if I'm going to use round figures if I could, last year's budget, people were up in arms that we spent roughly a little over five, let's say $600,000 for high school kids. Take it out of your $2 million and you've got 1.4 million roughly that you're spending on 70 kids in this building down here. So I'm asking you to seriously look at where you can cut because you're pushing the older seniors out, you're hurting people trying to make these payments. Our budget, I'm going to start to compare our budget to other towns and the number of students that we have. It's just out of whack, something is drastically wrong. So I'm asking each of you as dedicated board members, and you are dedicated because you do that for practically nothing. And I respect all that you do, but I'm asking you to respect the people that are out here trying to survive to pay another $2.1 million for that school. We, I, I, I won't, I think we could be a monastery school and do it a lot cheaper than we're doing it right now. I thank you for your time and I ask you to please consider that. Michael, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Barbara.
Any other public comment? To consider the approval of the December 21st, 2017 school committee minutes as written with corrections as recommended by superintendent schools. Do you have a copy of that?
We have a copy.
Cute. You're right, yeah. Uh, one thing I wanted to ask Mr. Johnson. We asked last month about, you know, uh, considering to work, you know, as the board on the budget. And I did talk to Renee up here. And what they do is they, with department heads management and then their board is actively, actively involved in the preparation. And I, I feel that, that we need to be, it's a learning experience. And so much of this, I mean, I'm just not, still don't feel that comfortable.
Yep.
With being part of a $2.1 million budget and not knowing, you know, where the money does go and how come we, you know, portion that much every year? Uh, let's say even like with sports and, you know, that's a, a given. But we, we don't have a chess club or, you know, all these different groups, but we do budget in every year for that. So like that, where does that much go?
Yep. The, the, the answer is if you don't spend it, it stays with you. I am, I am happy to provide this board with other avenues to participate in the budget. I am happy to explain at any time. Uh, and, and we can all work together moving forward. I'm fine with it. Yeah.
When is, when is the most crucial time that you really put this together that our input could be the most valuable?
The most, the most crucial time actually is March 8th, leading up to your June, uh, vote here in town. But I have to give you some other key points that I think, uh, play into that significantly. In February, that is when state subsidy is released typically. And there have been some cases, eight or 10 years ago now where state subsidy was a little bit later. But usually the first numbers from the state arrive, uh, in February. That's when we can start looking at subsidy, how much money are we getting? The other factor that comes into play in compiling your budget are known quantities. And what do I mean by known quantities? The biggest one are teacher salaries as determined by contract. Uh, we're in year one of a three-year contract. So we know what teacher X is going to be making year two, year three, and so on. If we can actually put that in, because that's a contractual obligation. Um, the flexible items as to, you know, are there, are there any other things that we want to prioritize? Professional development, extracurricular, travel, these types of things. How much money do you want to carry on your fuel line? Uh, do you want to put money in there for capital improvement? Uh, things like that, these are discretionary items. Well, if you want to, you know, re-shingle the roof one year, you can, and you can defer it to another year. But my office is, is in the ideal position to put in the known quantity. You know what the teacher contract says, so this is a known amount of money we can stick it in. Uh, so when I come to a meeting, I can come with that prepared because that's a contractual obligation. But anything else pretty much is, you know, up for negotiations. But teacher salaries and tuition, uh, are the two biggest drivers in your budget. And tuition, by law, you have to educate your resident students and we'll, we'll do a tuition projection. We've been pretty close, uh, in most years. But the other thing that I would say is that it speaks to what Barbara was talking about a few minutes ago. If you have a student that changes residency during the course of the year, you will start paying tuition on that. And you bring that tuition that you budgeted through, but that goes into the carryover as well. But if you're paying a significant amount of money in tuition, and you are, because you don't have a high school, um, that's a big ticket item in your budget that you have really very little control over because you have to educate your secondary students.
Okay, can I interrupt you because we do have that desire for. Yeah, okay. We're going to, um, discuss the A O S 77 budget, which is joint provision to it, so. So to consider the approval of the minutes, do you have a motion on that?
Uh, I'll make a motion. I just want to ask Mr. Johnson one more thing, and I'm sure that you're going to. Uh, on the website and the survey, uh, we still, have we done anything with those?
Excuse me, Wanda. Can we make a motion and get this off the table, please?
Okay. What part can I ask of both that?
The school committee.
The school committee.
Okay, I make the motion. Um.
So the school committee means?
Two, two, three minutes.
Okay, is a second on that?
Uh, second.
All in favor? Principal's report.
I do have a few questions if anybody wants to talk. So it's an early release date and we will be working on proficiency-based education. We have sent some staff members to different trainings and they will be reporting out and training other staff members. Progress reports close tomorrow. On the 22nd, our travel team basketball is Lubec versus St. Stevens at 5 o'clock at home. The 23rd, we have a Washington County Shared Leadership Day, which Larry Jones, Kathy Morrison, myself will be attending. On the 25th, we have a comprehensive needs assessment. Uh, this is a committee that I've asked if there's any school board members or community members, parents who would like to be part of that, please call the school. It is a requirement from the state that we must do to assess any needs we have in English, language arts, math, or any part of the school. Progress reports go home on the 26th. On the 29th, it is day two of the Main Cohort for Customized Learning, Replacing Grading with Effective Learners Feedback. Um, Anna Street, Michelle Mitchell, Elie Wibbity, and myself will be going. On the 29th, that will be the week of star testing for all students. Also on the 29th, the travel team basketball, uh, Lubec versus Woodland, that will be a 4:30 game at home. The 30th is a snow date for a comprehensive needs assessment. On the 8th of February, I will be attending the Washington County Leadership Team. We have a team here in Washington County that plans professional development, um, for all schools in the county. The 3D printer project that I reported on last month, we've met our fundraising goal, so two printers will be arriving soon. Um, if you remember, that was that, that the Perlofs would provide money for one 3D printer and we would raise the money for the other one. The marathon committee donated a thousand dollars for the use of the building. That has been deposited in the elementary contingency fund. Things that come out of that could be a new school sign, it could be a piece of equipment for the playground. Um, it goes back to the kids. Uh, as far as the website goes, Larry Hayward is working on a free website through Google. I met with him today. He is in the process of learning all of this and at some point, he said it will be a slow process as he's only there, um, four or five hours a week. But we're looking at handbooks and policies and sports schedules and school calendar and highly qualified stuff eventually. But I can't give you a date when we'll have that complete, but he is working on that.
You know, on the printers, now what, what things will they be able to do with those two?
They print out actual 3D figures. It could be science, could be history, math. Um, when we had the wreaths donated, they did a few decorations to put on the wreaths, so.
Wow.
So it's a lot of, a lot of options on that one.
Question on the marathon committee. How did they work out for the building itself last year? Were you any issues?
I, I have never had any issues or complaints. I don't, they weren't part of your building. Some of it needed childcare and they store stuff, but.
And we open up for the marathon. We have summer wrecks. The marathon always falls a day before summer wreck begins. So we have.
Yeah, remember she did all that Dari-ish stuff down there personally the last year, so.
Yeah, yeah, we like it when they come. We charge them a lot more than everyone else.
Well, they don't, they choose to, to the, your building, yeah.
The marathon does in general, but we charge the parents extra, more than we would our community members for that service for the best.
So I have a question about the, the, um, the websites. Jenny said he's, he's learning how to do it through Google and everything.
Yes, it is a free website.
Um. Wouldn't it be better if we had somebody that knew how to build the website instead of somebody that's trying to figure out how to build the website?
The issue with that is Larry Hayward is our tech guy. He's, he's who we have. So we asked him, we asked him first and he said he was willing to do it.
So I, I thought he knew how. I didn't know we were going, he was going to have to learn how to do it.
But we're already, he's already on the budget. He's already a staff of member. So it'd be him that gets the first choice.
It would? Well.
That was my director from the board at the last meeting was to talk to Larry.
I didn't, I, there was no way that he did not know how to build the website.
I'm not saying he doesn't know how. He may need to learn different parts of Google. Every, everything is different.
Okay, school committee. Wanda, where do you go?
I just, well, I asked him and I guess he's answered it. I was wondering how our, um, although the, uh, the survey was going, have we started anything with the parent and teacher survey?
I'm still, I'm still waiting to receive questions.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, I indicated that I was willing to receive the questions and just kind of compile a list and, uh, and give them to Larry. And I'm still waiting. So if any of you have any questions or.
I do, and I, I didn't get them printed, but I, I am going to work on that in Farley. And it can, uh, Miss Anna, and, you know, just to bring up about the P T L real quick or the P T C, that, that was established and that went wonderfully. And, uh, the only thing we're asking are for more parents.
How many, how many people attended the meeting?
Uh, we had, uh, well, actually three teachers were there, four, and we had two parents and a grandparent. But I, I think that it went wonderfully. Uh, they, in that short time, there's a lot of things lined up and we're hoping that more. And we know that there are more parents that choose to participate.
Two parents showed up?
Yeah. But, but anyway, that was awesome.
I mean, in the future, I mean, I'm going to add it to parent, teacher, community collaboration because we do have, you know, this one option, but we would gladly require the, so I'm going to extend the invitation. Why, why did that take place? Um, the first Tuesday of March. Yeah. First Thursday of March, sorry.
Did we have the weather event that night?
Yes, we did. And then it was rescheduled for the second Thursday. But their, their monthly meetings will be the first Thursday of March.
Okay, uh, the last meeting, I talked about having an electrician look into the, uh, boosters kiosk, I guess we can call it, outside the gym. I did call two electricians, one responded back. I do have an estimate on what it would cost to, uh, bring that system up to, um, make it a little bit safer for people that are using it. Have that figure in front of you there. Um, this is the best case scenario and something like that as far as he really doesn't know if he can get into, uh, any more problems than, other than what he sees. Because he can't really judge how many wires he could put through a conduit until he actually opens it up, so. So to, um, replace and add to, uh, two additional G I C I circuits into that area and put a plug in so the boosters can now get, um, a hot water heater in that system. Looking at $544 to get that done. And then the boosters will be responsible for getting their hot water heater, which is a 115, you can pick up for, you know, uh, a good price and then having someone come in there. So this way here, they would have access to hot water all the time. And, um, the safety reason is not blowing circuits or having, but we have a lot of double taps in there. We have a lot of two breakers on one, so one, one box. And, uh, it can pose a safety hazard, so.
We have to be very careful.
You thought you pulled something out, that's another plug in.
Yeah, we build what we can plug in where, what we, like, if we get an extra crock pot, we have to up close what they could plug the crock pot.
This will eliminate that, you know, danger of possibility of a fire or someone being shot back there. So, um, if we can have a motion on that, I'd like to kind of add that in if we can, um, either yay or nay on that. The electrician says he can have this job done probably in the next two weeks to get that all set. And that'll be before the, uh, the, uh, basketball season starts, so. So you have those figures in front of you. And like I said, I did call two people, only one responded back.
Well, I'm in motion to accept his bid because I feel we definitely need it for safety.
It is, yes. Second on that?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm very upset.
You what?
I'm going to step back.
You're going to step back? Okay, because you remember the. Okay. So I'll call him and get that done. And get that in the system here so we can eliminate that hazard. And get that in the system here so we can eliminate that hazard.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else at school board members? Superintendent's report.
I have a couple items of interest for us this evening. First, I'm happy to provide a legislative update. There are several bills, as you can imagine, that are slated to go through the legislature this particular session. The first one I'll call your attention to is LD 1666. It's entitled an act to ensure the successful implementation of proficiency-based diplomas by extending the timeline for phasing in their implementation. This particular piece of legislation, as proposed, would, as the title suggests, extend the deadline for phasing in the proficiency-based diploma. The diploma obviously is awarded at secondary level, but you may still hear some questions from parents regarding the proficiency-based diploma. I can tell you that the likelihood of this passing, it's hard to gauge because this particular timeline for implementation's already been delayed twice. As it stands right now, the current freshman would be on the clock for the first group graduating with a standards-based diploma. So whether or not that gets phased in, whether or not this particular piece of legislation gets passed, I wouldn't want to speculate. The next one, that's some interest to the board. An act forbidding food shaming, food denial, and the use of food as discipline involving any child that means public schools. Sounds kind of ominous, but what that would do is it would eliminate the practice of giving a student a different lunch just because that student's family hasn't paid the bill. In years past, there are some school districts that if a student owes a significantly large lunch bill, they get a peanut butter and jelly sandwich because you can't deny them lunch, but this would eliminate that as well and all students would get the same lunch regardless if that were to pass. So that's the intent behind that bill. The last legislative update I would call your attention to. An act to repeal certain provisions regarding the system administration allocation affecting main school districts in the 2018-19 biennial budgets. You are a minimum subsidy receiver, so this one really doesn't affect you, but the intent there is to remove the penalties for school districts that did not get into some type of consolidation movement with other school districts. Those applications had to go in before Christmas and the state has released a list. There are 19 of those proposed. There are none in Washington County, and I don't believe there are any east of the Pops Guard, quite frankly, but I'm going from memory, but I am certain there are none in Washington County. Funding update, a couple items here that I will have for us. It's not often I get to be the bearer of good news when it comes to funding, but as you know, last summer, there was a compromise that was reached in Augusta whereby a budget stalemate was averted after just a minimum amount of time. Minimum subsidy receivers are going to be seeing an increase in subsidy. Instead of 30% for special education costs, you're gonna be getting 40%. So as a minimum subsidy receiver, you will be getting a little more subsidy in that regard. However, for our friends who are not minimum subsidy receivers, the news isn't quite so good. In that budget compromise, there were promises made. There will be additional funding for schools and this, that, and the other thing. However, there are priorities that are gonna be taking some of the money out of the general allocation. More specifically, CTE, Career Technical Education, is now going to be run through the EPS system and they're going to be using the same part of money. So when that budget compromise was passed in the summertime and schools said, wow, we're gonna get more money, well, if you're not paying for CTE programmings, you're probably not. There are also efficiency grants that were out there that have been in the works for several years. Money, that money will be targeted for those projects and that too is coming out of the same part. So while I still think that there will be more money in general-purpose aid for education, I don't think it will be as much as people believed six months ago when the compromise was reached by the legislature in the summer. So we'll stay tuned. Like I said, I expect to see some of the figures in February, but you don't know when either. Finally, I have been, I've been asked to consider, to ask the board whether or not they'd like to reconsider the proposed dates for mediation. You got an email from me indicating that the dates in question were February 6th, 7th, and 8th. I have another town that's spoken for February 7th, so we're in consideration for either the 6th or the 8th. But one of the members of our negotiations team from the support staff is going to be out of town on one of those dates and I am asking the board what their thoughts are on rescheduling that date.
I can't do the 8th because it's championships for basketball.
Okay.
No, Jenny, I asked, I'm the one that asked for it. I'm gonna be out of town for the month of February and I've been actively involved in all of the meetings, I believe. And I asked if we could delay for at least one more month. It's been four months already and I didn't feel another month would make that much of a difference. I could be back, I'm gonna be back next month. But I'd like to be involved in it. I have through the year with the process.
And Crystal isn't here. She was the other board member involved in the negotiations?
Yes, yes.
Okay, did you hear back from her at all on that?
I have not heard a confirmation back from Crystal. I haven't heard it one way or the other in her case.
With the other, what are the dates that the other, that the other side has?
The other town is locked in for the 7th. Now, you can act independently of the other town, don't get me wrong. Part of the reason for trying to get a couple of dates side by side is for travel considerations for the state mediator. There aren't a lot of state mediators who do that type of work and we are to some degree locked into that person's availability. I can't, I don't know what that person's availability is. But you know, it could be, it could be rescheduled. I just can't guarantee that it can be rescheduled, like, in a matter of two or three weeks. It could be longer than that. But ultimately, it's whatever this board directly do.
Well, I think our last meeting was in October, maybe, or September, even I think.
It was one of those two months. We filed for mediation. I believe we filed the paperwork. It appears either in November or December. And the earliest they could get us a date was the end of July, the 30th and 31st, or these dates.
Okay, it's the 6th, 7th, and 8th, so? Okay, I could probably get to one of those three days. I mean, I'd like to get this done as possible.
It sounds like if we can't do it...
It sounds like it tonight, Jenny, what Mr. Johnson's saying, but maybe if you call tomorrow, it might be different.
Because they said that or July, so that's what he's saying tonight.
No, I got, I got two sets of dates. One was in January. Those dates are, at this point, are not available. The other sets are February 6th, 7th, and 8th. So if you want to reschedule, I can't project when they may be available. I don't know what the state mediator's schedule is. But ultimately, if this board wants to reschedule, we can directly reschedule.
I'd like to get into one of those dates in February because we don't know how far that's gonna go up.
If it's gonna be more than a month, and if we are talking July, I don't, I wouldn't be willing to go that far.
No, it's not.
My only other issue though is Crystal was the one that was on the negotiations and she's not here to speak. So I don't know.
I'm here to speak, Jenny.
Without...
I'm sitting over here speaking, Jenny, but I can't go with everybody.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying I'm not comfortable making a decision. I know what your opinion is and I don't know what her opinion is, but you were both on that.
Okay. Get a hold of the other member that was on the negotiations team and find out what's going on with her dates. See if she can accommodate one of those dates.
Okay, so you want me to verify what Crystal's, what Crystal's available?
And if they can't, they can't be done, then just project out how far it's gonna be out, you know, if it's gonna be March or April to get a new date on this negotiation scheme.
Can you contact the state, Mr. Johnson, or the mediator?
I do have the name of the mediator and I can see, I can see what I can find out. So what I will do is I will do those two things. I will verify Crystal's availability and I will see what other dates the state mediator might be available and I will email the group.
Adjustments to the agenda. Are there adjustments you wanted to add in?
I've got a couple this evening. As Mr. Tinker has reminded us, I'd like to add reallocating the PWE ba, the golf stipend to the PWE basketball position. The amount's $575 and I would suggest we make that number six under new business. I also need a quick executive session for personnel. I would recommend you make that number seven. And you can see under number one that I don't see Sheldon here this evening unless he's hiding somewhere where I can't see him, behind a cold. No, I don't see him. But I was asked to put something on there about the facility and the after-school program, so we have somebody here with us tonight that can...
Well, actually, Mr. Johnson, I had asked for Sheldon to come as I assume part of the maintenance to be able to tell us a little bit about the building. And maybe tomorrow you can find out why he couldn't attend.
I can find out.
Are you here for the purpose?
I'm here to, there's a discrepancy regarding the kids accessing through the building and so I'm here just to address that from our perspective. So the arrangement that we have currently is for Sheldon or Tammy, whoever is responsible that day, to open the door for my staff and allow the children through on bad weather days. And to my knowledge, that is happening. And I guess now there is a new concern regarding the fact that kids come into the after-school program and then they leave for cheerleading or basketball and they're going outside. I met with my staff before this meeting and they said they were only concerned about icy days, if it's icy outside. And I had already spoken with Tina about the door being opened on those days so that they can get through if there is a bad weather day. And so I think it's already been resolved.
Well, you know, Kathy, I'm down there quite a bit. And I was there one day last week and even on cold, icy days, what I don't understand about this, because I am down there and it's cold, we've had very cold days. We've got little kids down there and first I want to know who owns the building? Who owns this?
Well, the school, the school owns the building. The school owns the building?
Yeah.
The town?
The town owns the building and...
We rent, we rent that space. So, you know, there is no reason to just have access in between. We don't require that. We don't need there to just be open access. You know, I guess if there weren't concerns, then I suppose that could work, but there are concerns on both sides. I mean, I don't necessarily want just everyone to be able to come through and the school doesn't want that from our end to the school side. So, you know, it's, we keyed it that way for a reason. We rekeyed the entire building because there weren't keys for every individual door anymore.
Do they have keys for your end?
Tina has master key.
Sheldon and I do. For everything?
She has a master key that will allow her to...
For everything?
And we need to have that be the case because if there was ever an emergency, if we weren't in the building and there were a fire or...
Water damage.
Water damage. I mean, you know, you just never know and we're fine with that. I don't have an issue with that. I mean, we rekeyed it and intended for Tina to have a key.
Well, I guess my concern as a parent and as a school board member, I don't see any need for our students to walk in rain when they have a high school door that goes through the library. The kids walk past the cafeteria, they can go right in. I just don't understand why there's this at that door.
Well, they can. They just have to get someone to let them through. And we keyed it so it's double locked, so we, our side has to be open and the school side for that door to work. And we've already put something in place for them to go to the janitorial staff and be allowed through.
What if they can't find that person? What do they do?
Well, you know, I...
There's somebody there until 5, Tammy's there until 5:30 at night. There's an overlap of Sheldon and Tammy for voting Howard, 1 to 2. Sheldon leaves at 2. Tammy's there until 5:30.
Does Tammy have a key too?
She has access to Sheldon's key in his office.
I've been down there twice. They've walked outside in the rain and they've walked outside in the cold. I just don't get it. It's not the schools, it's the town building. There are town children and why do they have to walk outside in the elements when they can just walk through this cafeteria, open this door and go?
Well, they can, but to keep the building secure, we have to keep that locked because we have, like, for instance, on a pantry day, we have 300 people potentially that would come through that building and I don't want the risk and the concern of having that door open where I have to worry about who gets on the other end and that because then I'm responsible. So I don't, I don't want the door locked open either. And so we put this in place and the staff, my staff, just needs to make sure that they meet with Sheldon or Tammy and there should just be a set time every day that they're gonna come through. I mean, every, this happens at the same time every day.
But did you say there was a resolution to the problem?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I am concerned, it's resolved. Now, whether or not kids have to then go outside because they're going to basketball or cheerleading, if it's a bad weather day, the staff needs to go back to Tammy. Linda has Tammy's cell phone number.
What about, that's a good question now. These kids, I was down there Monday night. I think I was down there for the game. So these children are going outside to go around. It's dark now and there's a lot of cars coming and they have to go outdoor versus going through this little door again to go down into the gym.
Right, so I can, I could sit here right now and send Tammy Mallard a message or a messenger or call her and she'll answer. Linda needs to do the same and just, you know, contact her.
Calling the one you have set up and I apologize to Kathy, but I'm down there visibly seeing kids walk out and walk through big elements.
Well, it might be a time management issue. Maybe, maybe they are getting close to the time when the kids need to go and there's not time to pre-arrange. But these, these events happen at the same time every day too. The practices are, you know, at a set time, so those, that just needs to be pre-arranged so that they can get that door opened and have access. I think it's manageable. I think we can...
How is it a, how is it a school committee issue though because they're a separate entity from the school? I'm not...
Well, because we both hold keys to go through that door.
But it's already been resolved, so on bad weather days, they can go through that door.
On bad weather days, they can go through that door. They just need to contact the proper people to let them through. We don't hold keys that will get us onto the school end.
And there was a resolution that has been set?
It is, it is set and it just needs to be utilized. And if we have trouble with it being utilized in the future, I will contact Tina and we will resolve it.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, Kathy. No problem.
I have a question. Sheldon was asked to be here by you?
Yes.
Okay. I'll look into it. Well, I mean, the thing is, I mean, no one on the school board is Sheldon's direct supervisor.
No, I asked him to come to just kind of give us, like I asked Darlene Wright to come, to give us board members a little update about what their job consists of, Mike. And I don't think I'm outside my board position to ask so. I'm not their director. No, I'm not, but I have a right to ask them.
So the question is, was his job description this?
No, I was gonna... No, I was going to ask them about our building quite honestly. No, I know, Mike, I've been on the board before that I'm not doing that kind of stuff in a public meeting. Thank you.
Do you need anything else from me?
No.
I'm going home.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Hi Kathy.
All the adjustments, thank you.
Well, is there anything about the IT? I still have, is that an adjustment?
Both.
I, I haven't gotten any answers about IT. And not the against person. I have been asking for, I'd like to see a contract. I'd like to see a job description. I want to know how many hours we're paying for and if it's a salary position or is it hourly, then I'd like to see a timesheet. And I've been asking for this for three months and I get nothing.
We can't, we can't do that without a head president, can we? Can't talk about it without a-
Do we need to go into executive session for that?
Executive session.
No, yeah, and I'm just talking about the general job description. And we don't have to talk about the person or anything, but what is, what are we paying for IT? I'd like to know what is, what is the description of the job? Are they just to fix things? I, what are they doing for us? Not the person, the job description itself. I'd like to know. You know, I'd like to know what we're getting for our money.
I can get, the amount of money is in the public domain. How do you stand money? Is it in the public domain?
Yes, I understand that and I understand when I sign in awards every week and I don't know how that is being spent. I'd like to know what are we getting for our money?
Okay.
And what is expected?
We're getting our internet running, CPR internet running, we're getting our Apple TVs going, we're getting our, you know, tech, what he's paid for is to keep our, our system working at the school.
How many of those do you own?
Five hours a week. Holy, okay, um, five hour-
Okay, so we had that in?
So, five hours a week, it's not a lot. It's like five hours a week or something.
Okay, well, I'm signing warrants because that are encouraging high for five dollars a week. So, I'd like to know less of that.
Can we put that on an agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd like some information on that. I'd like the contract, I'd like the job description. I'd like some clear facts on this. And again, it's not the person that is currently doing the job. It's because I basically have no information. We're just sort of, oh, we're getting this, so this is probably what it's worth, but do we really know that? Because we can contract out for twenty-five dollars an hour and are we getting our money for it? That's all I want to review this.
Okay, so we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting? And we'll have all that mentioned in front of us and we can post that in there.
Thank you, you're making me hungry, stop.
What are you cooking over there?
Today, we had Tina, excuse me, I went down and signed warrants today. And I see, I guess it's the boiler that we had another bill for twelve hundred now. I'm wondering what's happened to it. It was seven thousand last month and twelve hundred, is that for the boiler?
You have, you have two bills there. One is heating, you have two bills-
I saw the five hundred dollar one.
One's for heating oil.
But this had a list of what was going on, what's going on with that boiler?
That, that, that particular one, if there's a list filed there, there wasn't the, there wasn't the service call that's on your current warrant. And that was related to the timing on the system because it was colder in the building on one, during the daytime when the students were there, so we had a service call. And we've since had, as I reported in our last meeting, ABM mechanicals come and they determined that the problem was that the heat on the boiler itself wasn't turned up high enough, so there wasn't enough heat coming into the system in the first place. And the reason that bills showed up after their visit and it's on this particular warrant is just the timeframe involved in Eastern getting the bills up. But you are correct, that was a good point.
We were told at last meeting about it. It was just now showing up on the warrant.
I'm wondering, Mr. Johnson, I went down and this was last month about the warrants and we've been out and signed them. And there was one I wanted to look back on, but Norine said that we dispose of ours after a certain amount of time. I'm wondering if there's a way that we could keep our warrants, the Lubec School, on our, in our facilities somewhere. Why did they destroy them?
You dispose of them?
That's what Norine said, that they, after all, they sit there at her office for Lubec.
Right.
But why can't, we have a copy that we signed, so why can't we keep them all in Lubec?
Is she, is she talking about a copy of a warrant here? Because we have, we have to maintain a record in the central office for, I think it's for like seven years.
You have yours, but I'd like to see ours, Kathy, Lubec.
It's a local decision. If you want to keep your copies here in Lubec, you can. We're required to keep a copy in the central office for auditing purposes and we have to keep it on file. I'm going from memory, but I think it's seven years, but my staff, they have a list and they have to keep this record for seven and this for ten and this for two and whatever, but we, but there's no reason why you can't have a local copy here if you want.
It might be spaced, Tina, but maybe you can find somewhere.
How long would you like her to keep those? Six month period?
Couple of, for a year even to go back on.
Probably a year at a minimum of a year.
Minimum of a year or a year? I just want to try to give her some guideline.
Budget, budget.
Yeah, budget to budget, so.
Thank you.
Okay. You have a copy of all these policies here? Consider the first reading of the revisions of the following policies. A, B, E, school committee meetings. And the question I have is, what is forcing these to bubble up at this time? In the case of school committee meetings, the change to your policy is the timeframe. We recently have come to this location and we changed our night from Tuesday to Thursday to accommodate the use of this location and that's fine. And what it does is it brings your policy up to date. It does say third Thursday now they hit the top and that is the change. Okay, keep in mind, this is the first reading of this. Right, just the first reading. So, if there's any changes we want to interject here and so on like that, we can do that at the next meeting and make those changes there unless there's something that really sticks out and screams at you.
I hope Sarah won't be here, Mike, but when, you know, Mark, I hope you'll hold it over because there were a couple of things that I'd like to pass to look at.
Send us an email or we'll interject it in there. So, the first reading of B, E, school committee meetings.
I vote to approve the first reading of revision to the B, E, school committee meeting.
Okay, and second on that?
I submit.
All in favor? And the second one is B, E, D, A, school committee meeting guidelines. And again, this goes back to two thousand ten, two thousand ten, yeah. And this again is because of why? Change in time. A year ago, approximately, we met at five. This board decided to meet at six to be a little more user friendly for the working person who might not be able to make a meeting right at five, so. You can see in the first paragraph, meeting will begin at six. Okay, and again, this is the first reading, so, a motion on that?
I vote to accept the first reading of B, E, D, A, school committee meeting guidelines.
And a second on that?
Any second.
All in favor?
And can I ask Mr. Johnson one thing? You know with policies, how, do they have a timeframe, like the state, how often they want school boards to review these? Is it definite?
It's a very good question and many times we do get policy updates emailed to us from main school management because there's been a change either in federal law or a change in state law that affects the implementation of these policies. All of these come to us from main school management. In a lot of cases, it's a boilerplate to just insert name of school district, but just so this board is aware, you can tweak them and customize them to fit you if you want. If it's a substantial change, I would, I would send it on down to our legal services just to make sure we haven't, you know, contradicted the intent or anything, but they come to us and indeed you're correct. We need to pay attention and make sure that we're updating regularly. Okay, and the next one is the first reading of I H, D, G, A, homeschooling participation in school programs. This is a little lengthy, so probably will involve a little more time looking at it. Again, why are this appearing on our desk now? This one is actually a deletion of wording, so the previous copy that you had referenced, graduation based on the main learning results and there were, there was terminology to that effect. You have the Common Core now and we need to make sure that we're keeping up to date in that. Now, the learning results are still indeed the guiding principles, if you will, in the other content areas that don't have a national standard already adopted from the Common Core, but in the case of English, Math, and Science, it's the Common Core now. So, there was language that was stricken and this policy is just re-adopting what was left. Okay. Now, so this includes people that are homeschooled but participate in school programs like field trips and maybe games and so on like that. Right, the change references specifically the one that I mentioned. Your existing policy does indeed outline how a homeschooled student could participate in classes, which is certainly allowable and extracurricular things. So, that's what the policy is directed at, but the change again is limited to what I said. Question I have and I'm sure some of the other board members might have. So, these are people who are not taught in a school but can participate in sports and so on like that. Now, the handbooks and rules that we have applying to these, let's say, extracurricular activities, do these folks have to abide by those and sign off on those booklets also?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Now, how is, with the students, do they, are they regulated by our school or by the state mainly?
If a parent chooses to homeschool their child, by rule, they are supposed to have a homeschool plan on file with the Department of Education. In my office, we receive a one pager that says notice of intent to homeschool and it lists the parents and the students there, so we know who is being homeschooled. But it is that parent's responsibility to submit a plan to the Department of Education and that plan has to be reviewed by somebody that the family contacts with. And I've got a few cases around the district where I actually see the review notes from that person who says, yes, this meets the standard of the plan and so on, but there is a protocol for that.
So, it wouldn't be like, Tina wouldn't do their principal?
No.
Unless they participate in a regular class.
Right, right. And again, this is a first reading, so, do we have a motion on this?
Sorry, still skipping these. I vote to accept the first reading of the I H, D, G, A, homeschooling participation in school program. You know, this is actually really interesting. Sorry.
Okay, a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Now, the next two are really interesting, so. And, okay, so first reading on GBCC employees' use of cell phones. This is a policy that is in place now? I didn't read it saying that, but I don't see anything as far as any kind of date on it. Is this a new policy?
I believe that it is.
Couple of questions I had on this and it says here in the third paragraph down, halfway down the paragraph, school administrators may confiscate in search of device when there is reasonable suspicion that an employee has violated this policy. And the policy, they're talking about different things that go on. Really? Can a school personnel really confiscate and-
It doesn't seem like they'd be-
Search a device?
To confidentially.
I don't know about that part, but it does specifically say that employees are only supposed to be using them during off-duty lunch or break time and that certainly is not the case as I have people who are walking down the hall on it.
Well, the thing that really concerns me is that, you know, I mean, we'll go, you know, take someone's private property to confiscate it.
Could that be like an issue with like a student sees something they probably shouldn't see on the teacher's phone, what the teacher's using in the classroom, would they go to the principal? Then the principal needs to search the phone to see exactly what it is up.
What you're describing is an extreme case, but that's why you have a policy.
I think the policy is too loose. I think it gives too much permission for someone to search and I, I feel that's violation.
I think all cell phones ought to stay out of the car because every classroom has a phone in and we're paying you to be catching, not on your cellphone.
I do not agree with them being on their cell phones at all, but I do not agree with wording saying that they have a right to search because that's way too loose. Way too loose in the basis of these-
They're by law enforcement officers, they're not, you know, someone like that can actually-
I don't want the right.
So.
Yeah, I don't want to see.
Is this put in here? Is this a royal plate? Okay. You can strike it if you want. Because, you know, something like that is like, I mean, it's like, to me, is going out there a little bit on the limb, so.
They would be extreme.
Yeah, but you're still giving that in, you're giving discretion to the person, whoever happens to be the one in charge. Furthermore, you know, at their discretion of when they see something happen, they go to the window and say, let me see it and I think we're setting ourselves up for losses there. I don't, I do not want-
The other factor that would come into play as to why it can be there, just for the sake of explanation, if this board doesn't want it, then it can be deleted.
Yep.
But under the law, the board is responsible for the school environment and that covers a lot of things. So, if employee X is walking down the hall with a snazzy phone like this with a big screen and sits down a little Johnny or Susan sees something on the phone, that's the learning environment. That's the school environment. That's a pretty broad umbrella. I agree. You know, it can be that, that would give you a pause, but-
That is an extreme example, so we're going to sit there and say, and, you know, and put in extreme wording of restricting somebody's private information. I, I have, I do not feel comfortable with that wording.
This is, this is a good example of why I said that you can't tweak these policies. These are samples and as a board, you're elected by this community and if you feel strongly that the standards of this community would be better served by striking that language, then all you need to do is at the next meeting, you can tell me to strike that language. That's as simple as that. Good. On the same paragraph, we're talking about the school unit employees are prohibited from using handheld cell phones or electronic communications devices while driving Lubec School Department-owned motor vehicles. Now, if we go down to the school bus drivers, okay, the wording on the policy and so on like that doesn't reflect the same wording on that same paragraph there. It basically says employees operating a school bus are a school, a school unit vehicle transporting students, okay? Are prohibited from operating a vehicle. And the paragraph on the top of that, whether, it says whether or not they're transporting students, other staff are driving alone. So, it doesn't reflect the same-
That's even against the law.
And the reason, the reason for that is that there are district, school districts in this state that have several lanes. Some of our colleagues in Oyster County, for example, if they want to send four teachers to a professional training in Portland, it's a long haul from Frenchville, St. Yeah.
Don't we pay someone to transport students to Galus?
You were.
So, we'd be, go for that too?
Yeah, but my, 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 my pointing this out is that you have a difference of policy from one vehicle and then going down to the school bus, you know, it only says while transporting students. Okay, it doesn't say while operating the bus alone.
students, okay, it doesn't say while operating the bus alone, where the other one does say operating a school vehicle, whether students, other staff are driving alone. So I'd like them to reflect the same. So this way here, you've got a school vehicle, whether it's a vehicle, like a motor vehicle, like a car, or a minivan or whatever, or school bus, they should all be the same. Can't be operating a cellphone whether you're transporting students or not, or by yourself. You shouldn't be operating a cellphone in anyone's vehicle at all, unless it's an emergency.
And then, that's why, that's why that language is in there.
Right, right. And then it goes on to say, you know, whether it's a personally-owned, you know, cellphone device or a school cellphone device, except in an emergency, ought to call for assistance in the event of a mechanical breakdown or mechanical problem, and then only when the vehicle's stopped or parked. So, I think both paragraphs, both instances should reflect exactly the same. Okay. Any comment on that? Are you second, just the first reading? Okay. Any motion on that? Employee use of cell phones.
I move to accept the first reading of the GBCC employee use of cell phones.
Okay, second on that?
I second it.
All in favor? Now we come to J I C J, student use of cell phones and other electronic devices. One of the things I would probably interject here is iPods and iPads, I do have iPads here, but I think any kind of electronic device probably covers that, but.
What, what do our children have at school? Do they have Blacktop, what do they hang for?
iPads.
Do they all have them?
One, grades one through eight. Grade K and K have Kindles.
Are there a lot of blocks?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sometimes, just depending on how tech savvy they are, sometimes as soon as we block them, they unblock them.
Tina and I actually talked about this a little bit this afternoon, and, you know, like, even like with getting into all these different sites and, you know, you start having hackers coming on it.
Scary stuff.
Yeah, it is.
Discussion of motion on student use of cell phones and other electronic devices. No opinion?
I move to approve the first reading of the J I C J, student use of cell phones and other electronic devices.
Okay, second on that?
I second it.
All in favor? So the homework is kind of like make adjustments on these, and we'll get up at the next meeting with a second reading and changes. Consider the discussion of the Lubec portion of the A O S seventy-seven budget.
Okay, I wanted that to be, you know, brought up too tonight, and that meeting has been changed to the twenty-four.
With a snow date for the twenty-fifth, so we're working for the twenty-four.
But anyway, even with this budget, Mr. Johnson, you know, we choose to, to, you know, participate with an all, but I feel, you know, I myself don't feel knowledgeable how much does our school contribute?
Yep. The cost-sharing formula is determined by the A O S agreement, and the A O S agreement is a big ugly document about the ethic that goes back to when the A O S was formed. And to answer your question, for the year that we're sitting in seventeen eighteen, Lubec is paying nineteen point three-two percent. And I have four towns that range from seventeen point four to, this past year Lubec was the highest for nineteen point three-two, that will change for the upcoming year based on your student count, but that is again determined by the A O S agreement. More specifically, how is that percentage calculated? In the agreement, it says that you have to average the April and October enrollment counts, you average them together, and then divide by the total to get a percentage. So that is, that straddles two school years, but it's one calendar year. So if you have students that graduate or a big class going out and a small class coming in over summer or they move away, the numbers can be quite different between April of one year and October of the next year. So that's why we average the two together by A O S agreement. And, you know, the nineteen point three-two for the year that we're sitting in, last year before that, sixteen seventeen, Lubec was eighteen point eight-nine. So there were four tenths of one percent variation. And this question comes to me in the district meetings. If a town, if a town's enrollment stays relatively stable, say you only lose one or two, you're relatively stable, if the other towns lose students, then the town that stays stable could see an increase in percentage just because the total number of students in the district has declined. So when I, when I, when I'm at the district meeting and, you know, I get a question like, well, our enrollment is exactly the same as the previous year, why is our, why is our district allotment increasing? That is the explanation, because if one particular school stays constant and everybody else drops, then that one particular school has a higher percentage. So that's how that, that's how that calculation is made.
Like, I've got this one for two thousand seventeen eighteen, like Robinson's is always zero, now why is theirs always zero?
They, they.
Did they get kids?
Now, Robinson withdrew from the district. I started in May of twenty fifteen, Robinson withdrew effective July one and subsequently closed their school.
Right.
So they are no longer part of A O S seventy-seven, and truthfully, Robinson can be deleted from there. You see the zeros, then they just plain should be deleted because they're no longer part of the district.
So this year, and this year we're still the higher number, but on this page, it doesn't tell us what student population in all these schools are.
Right.
So we're still at the highest number, we have a hundred and ten students.
This year.
And so Eastport, how many do they have?
I'd have to look at theirs, but I did do the research for Lubec knowing that I was coming here this evening. For the year that we're sitting in seventeen eighteen, we had a hundred and one. And as Tina has reported and yourself, because I know you got the data from my office, we had a hundred and ten this year, so you've lost ten students between last year and this year. So when I do your A O S budget allocations for the upcoming year, the eighteen nineteen budget, you're gonna see that decline in students. I, I, you've got, you're very close to Perry, and you kind of jockey in for position back and forth depending on who has a bigger class and who doesn't, but those numbers, those numbers can, those numbers can change, and they do change a little bit year to year.
Let me ask a quick question. How many graduate, high seniors do we have this year? How many do we have graduating?
It's in your budget, if I got that with me.
And how many do we have going in to high school?
How many going in or coming out?
Both, going in and nine out.
Nine will be going in.
So you have nine going in, and I don't have that data right.
They make this a pretty small graduated class, is that?
I don't think so, I think it's fairly good size going out.
I thought this year was a smaller, a smaller. It'd be the class with the triplets in it, and that was the largest class that we had graduated, I think there were sixteen or eighteen kids.
Last year we had fourteen graduating.
When the triplets were here, Jenny, there were sixteen or eighteen kids in that class.
A lot dropped out.
Yeah.
It was a big class at one time, I'm not sure.
I'm just wondering how that will affect the business walk.
The, it will affect your local budget tremendously, because it affects tuition dollars. If you have more kids graduating than going in, you're gonna see fewer tuition kids, and that'll be a budget reduction.
Which will be great.
And that will, that will affect your budget significantly. As far as the decline in enrollment and the district budget, I'm going to be taking your October one count and dividing it with, and adding it with the previous April one count and dividing by two, because that's what the A O S cost-sharing formula calls for. So I expect your percentage to decline, because you've lost ten kids for this coming year.
Right. Okay. Okay, consider the discussion of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Lubec School Department budget. This is our local budget now, right? I believe every month we do get a copy of that running budget.
Well, I still recall getting it, might have keep mine, but I don't have one for ten or eleven, now he just gave you for twelve.
We get them through email.
See, I don't do mail. I mean, I'm starting to.
Okay, so every, every month, one is sent out from the office, and it's a running budget, and it will actually give us the running totals and how much is left in each little pocket.
But I, I feel, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels about being more actively involved in our budget process. We're responsible for it, and I feel we need to, you know, be more knowledgeable about that, and that's the only way, and like Barbara said, I mean, I've been on the board, this is my third time, and we did used to have two meeting, two board members, and it seems like we met often, but I feel that it would do us more justice if we all took a portion of this budget for a better understanding of it. I mean, I look at it and I'm still, you know, at a loss.
Well, if you look at the budget the way it's broken out, you've got some things that are actually fixed numbers that we have to.
Those I understand.
Okay?
Yeah.
The other stuff that, you know, you get into like building maintenance and transportation and so on like that, you know, those aren't really as fixed, those are the things we can kind of, you know, adjust around and wiggle and so on like that. Now, a few years ago, Mr. Johnson used the example of fuel oil operations, we were at eighty-five thousand dollars a year, and we had a couple of good years where we had, you know, well, they were good years, they weren't really cold and so on like that, and we had, you know, a budget windfall, if you want to call it that, of like over thirty thousand dollars. I believe on one of the years, two years ago, we cut that down to sixty-five thousand dollars, so it's not really a good example to use sometimes, because things can go really wrong with oil and the cost of oil.
Yeah.
You know, just someone, you know, sneezes over in the Middle East and prices go sky high, but that's one of the things that you can kind of adjust and work around. We try to, you know, make sure that, you know, people can kind of see, you know, from year to year, you know, if we have, you know, something left over in the budget that, you know, gets carried over. And we just had an example of where we had to adjust a special education or transportation budget, and we had the money in the budget to do that because we had appropriated twelve thousand dollars for a valve for the boiler system, but only ninety-four hundred of that was spent. So we had a little wiggle room to, you know, not feel the heat on that particular transportation budget, so things come up, so I agree with you, it's complicated, and it's, you know, just in the transportation aspect, there's probably like fourteen line items, you know, anything from fuel to tires to mirrors, you know, driver's salaries and so on like that, that it's really complicated what to look at. And, you know, we look at all those little, little pockets, and, you know, it does equate down to one number down the bottom of what we have to spend, but, you know, and how to adjust those and so on like that, I mean, can we adjust, you know, how many tires we buy a year? Well, the roads around here are pretty bad, so probably not. You know, some, some years we'll be lucky with, you know, ten tires, and other years we'll, you know, go through twenty tires, so.
Well, you know, it's an example, Mike, as, and I mentioned it earlier, even with the, oh, the clubs with all the sports, and there's quite a few in there, and there's like maybe four I think that we don't offer anymore, like golf or, you know, if they want that for Pee-wee, it's great, but it's like maybe ten thousand dollars, so every year we still ask for that extra ten thousand dollars. I guess that's the part I don't get. I understand about, you know, the costs that are budgeted in, I understand about all of that, but what about things that are put in, and then why, why do you ask for it every year? That's the part I guess I don't, that's one part that I don't understand.
Well, maybe when we, when we sit down and we, you know, go and, and sit down with the Budget Committee and so on like that, and workshops, we can actually peel some of those off this year.
I mean, with Mr. Johnson, and he does a great job, Tina, the teachers, I know they all have to be actively involved in this, but when we're doing it, it's like Barbara said earlier, we're going through this so fast, you can't really absorb, and we are responsible, we're voting in for that two-point, or, you know, we're passing this to the voters, and I'd like to know more of, more about their dog. So I'm not sure that you, other board members are interested in doing it that way or some way, but I just still need to be more active with that.
Oh, see if we can get some more information on how things work. Okay, number six. Something's changed with it. All-star, been golf, yeah. What, no takers on golf yet?
Yeah, I mean, and that, interesting, I don't know if you're aware, Pee-wee used to be at one time, all it was was just internurals, it was just our school kids, we separated into teams, and so there was that one stipend for it. Now our Pee-wee has changed, now we have a boys team and a girls team, and we travel to other schools, and we're in leagues, and we play, and so I was trying to petition the board to get the golf stipend changed over. We recently had an applicant, another applicant for a Pee-wee coach, and we'd like to be able to pay him. You know, the money is there, we, it already went to the union, the union had their, I mean, they voted to support the process, and the money is there, and I just wanted to petition the board for that.
And there's no chance golf is gonna happen?
Yeah, and I mean, that is the thing, is golf hasn't happened in a long time, and, you know, otherwise a lot longer saying, we do need to also remember, I do, you know, I would like to get this done, once we do take these monies away, they're really hard to get back too, so if we, someone decides they want to all of a sudden stop the chess club next year or the year after, well, you've taken that, you've scratched it out of the budget, it is difficult to get back, so.
But golf, golf, I think was originally a high school thing.
It was a high school.
Because you have to be a certain age in order to play.
I need to, I need to make.
I don't think it's been played in Lubec since a high school.
Three and a half team last two years, high school.
What's another one, chess? I can't remember what.
Yeah, I don't remember, I had the paperwork, I'm sorry, I was down to another meeting before this, and I just didn't get a chance.
So for the past couple of years, two to three Pee-wee coaches have been chairing one side?
Two Pee-wee coaches have been chairing. Actually, no, that's not true, because I'm the boys Pee-wee coach, and I was paid five hundred and seventy-five dollars every time I've got it, so I'm assuming that Diane didn't get paid, that's just an assumption?
So you have another name for us tonight, then?
We do have another name. Is that coming up later?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be right now, because if this board votes to create, to move the subsidy, then I'll nominate the person.
We're sitting right here.
Sitting right there, make your patience, young man, all right.
Any motion on this moving the golf stuff?
I'll make a motion.
To the Pee-wee basketball stipend.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To move the golf into the Pee-wee.
We're moving golf into Pee-wee basketball.
Why, you never heard him say basketball?
Yeah.
That's right.
Everything's basketball here, come on now.
But we only have Pee-wee and basketball, like, but not everyone knows that, so.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a second on that motion?
I have a second.
All in favor? And there we go.
Thank you.
I would nominate. Kobe saw it down. Thank you.
Good job. They give us something up, it's been hard to find.
I ain't going to do that. As difficult as it is to get people to step up, it's nice to be able to pay them.
Before we go off, can I just say, this, this basketball season, I see so much sportsmanship and respect from our teams to the other teams, it's been amazing. Our kids have really come around this year. Just that last home game on Monday, the boys, there was one example where the other team had a special needs child, and they stopped to let him shoot until he made that. the other team had a special needs child, and they stopped and let him shoot until he made that. You know, and it wasn't one time. Exactly. So for our students to show that much respect, um, to the other teams, it's really impressive.
And quickly also, another team, Saint Stephen's, sent us an email, sent it to me, I've seen it, saying how much they enjoyed coming here and playing, that they hadn't been anywhere where they announced the starting five, and then we played the Canadian National Anthem for them, and that they said, honestly, we can't wait to come back, because we play them most times here because we don't travel into Canada. They're playing in the high league here, so they come, they come over here.
Our sports have really stepped up, and thank you, Sean. Um, but the students are really amazing this year.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
You're welcome, thank you.
Welcome, Kobe.
Thank you.
Okay, considering entering in the executive session pursuant to statutory citation one, MRSA SS four oh five, sixth day to discuss personnel.
No, no, he's turned that up too, and that's getting put in the way.